She's already standing.
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 Please stand, remove your hat for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Do I say roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. McCarron?
Here.
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mrs. Barocas?
Present.
Mrs. Gardella?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Before I motion to approve the agenda, I would like to add student number six is resolved that the board affirms the finding of the HIB in case number 293478 JMH 05162025 and be it further resolved that the parents shall be provided with a written decision along with information on their right of appeal to the commissioner. I need a motion for the-
Mrs. Gardella, if I could just speak for one second before we do a motion?
Sure, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
No, no worries. I just wanted to let the public know, the board obviously knows, this is why we have all our computers out, that we've transitioned to an online platform for the agenda and for the building of the agenda and the publishing of the agenda. So, it's called Board Docs. We're working our way through the use of that, but it is, it becomes very much more a different process than the way that we've done it on paper. So, normally, we publish the agenda and then if there's any additional items that are needed to be added, you know, last minute item that must be added for this agenda, we end up publishing a document called an addendum. And we have an addendum available on paper in the auditorium when we do that. Well, because we're an online system now, you will not see that, you will not see an addendum, but rather, we update the link and the online platform. So, if you are viewing the agenda, if you saw it when we first published it, you want to go back in onto our website and look at it, the new electronic version, if there's any changes. We had just two small additions, but that's how the process will work moving forward. I just wanted to make the public aware of that. Thank you.
Does it say, like, when a timestamp on the last update?
It does not.
Okay.
No. So, but we're thinking about if there's anything we put in there to do that. So, again, we're just kind of working through that system. That might be something we choose to do.
Okay.
Yep. I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
I turn the meeting over to Ms. Primili for her superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gardella. So, welcome to school year 2526. It's hard to believe we are here and into our second week of school already. We have our restructured schools that are now open. We spent the summer preparing and the staff had three days upfront before the students returned to unpack moved boxes, prepare classrooms, prepare lesson plans, and prep before the students came in on the 5th of September. And kudos to, I always say this, that our incredible staff here really made sure everything was ready for our students on September 5th. And we have not turned back. We have moved forward with a very good start to our school year. Essentially, I just want to pause for a minute and let people understand what that means, a restructured school district. We basically have three new schools when you look at it. We have a high school that's a new high school, resembles difference than what our schools have looked like before. We have a middle school here. And we have a new structured school of 5-6 at what used to be the Getz School. Not only do we have new schools and new structures, but we also have all new bus routes as well. And as you can imagine, that's a huge undertaking for any school district or transportation department, especially in a town that's 100 square miles. So, it was an incredible task that was in front of us and what was done. And I need to say kudos and thank you to our transportation department, our drivers who've been navigating those new routes as well. Again, good people who all care about our kids and doing the right thing. Now, sure, are there things that we have to tweak and change? That's every school year as we roll out our new, as we roll out our routes. And we've been working through those small little glitches, addressing them by priority, safety first always, and then moving on to the next priority of requests for changes. We did have a little hiccup that we did not plan for, at nobody's fault, but the day, actually, the afternoon before our students were to arrive the next day, we learned that the Cedar Swamp Road was not going to open as planned. So, it was a very quick pivot we had to make, had to inform parents. Again, transportation had to go into, into the mode of problem solving of how they were going to get students from those areas to and from school. Unfortunately, we do have some long routes because of that, and we have been told that we are to consider that road closed till further notice. So, as soon as we hear something, we will let you know, but that was definitely a challenge. So, last week being the first full week of school, as I said, we ironed out any bumps that we may have had in schedules. Thank you, Mr. Palumbo, for all the work of the guidance counselors and yourself over there, addressing our students' needs, transportation, and anything else that popped up that we needed to address. Everybody's now starting to, our staff and our students are settling into their new routines and their new schools, and we're really off to a very good start. Athletics are in full swing and our teams are unifying and building relationships and rapport with one another. And we have even really had some really good wins as well, under our belts already. The high school marching band performed last Friday at the first home football game. Blew me away, powerful, powerful performance. And in fact, the very next day, they competed and took first place. Our dance team and our cheerleaders also performed at last Friday's home game, just so impressive at how united they are and how polished they all are already in their teams and their routines. The middle school, I was fortunate enough to come over to the middle school on the first day of school. It had an incredible, in this auditorium, pep rally and merging the two middle schools together. And the two, they had the two mascots here from McAuliffe and Getz, and they shook hands and they passed off the torch to the new Jaguar. It was very cute. The staff all got into it, the students all got into it, high energy, great way to kick off a new school year in a positive way. It's also really nice when I look out my office window and see our middle school students able to play tennis during PE, and they were playing also volleyball. We have an outdoor volleyball court here. There's also a hand court that was just re, a handball court that was just redone from a grant that they'll have availability to, some wonderful things that our middle schools will have some experiences with in this new, new structure. And the 5-6 school is off to a wonderful start as well, has a great vibe in that building. They're getting ready to kick off their den assemblies that will assign students to dens. It's a great way for students to feel connected to each other and to staff, and they work through those dens all year long. They are also getting ready to begin their intermural program, starting this fall, there will be flag football and soccer. We had an incredible interest in that. I wish that we could do even more of it for our students. Hopefully, we can continue to expand that program. There's just been an incredible interest in it. They also started their esports club at the 5-6 school and also here today. I know Dr. Godleski and Mr. Ratante were able to get over and see that first kickoff of esports, a very engaging opportunity for our students. And our elementary schools are also off to a good start. If you recall, in our restructuring plan, by removing some 5th grade classroom, removing our 5th grade and putting them into the 5-6 school, it allowed our elementary schools to breathe a little bit more and have a little bit more space, because if you also recall, we moved all of students and staff out of trailers last year into our buildings. And so, we needed to relieve a little bit of space in our elementary schools for that. And all of our trailers are now just about gone off the property, right, Mr. Bickensky? I think we just have one trailer maybe left?
Yes.
Or did it go?
It's gone.
Oh, it's gone. Yeah, incredible, incredible. All of them are now gone and our sites are remediated, so, nice. All of our schools have a really strong, positive energy into them. It's really been a good start. And again, I thank our admin, our staff, our teachers, and our parents for their positive outlook and energy with this new structure. It is certainly spread to our students. I see a lot of smiles, a lot of happy people. As always, though, we will continue to refine, problem solve issues, and make improvements so we are offering the very best of our programs and opportunity to our students. Also, last week, unbelievably, specifically last Thursday marked the 24-year anniversary of 9/11. It's been 24 years. Our students, we feel it's important to teach that history, and our students around the district participated in lessons, activities, and moments of silence. You may see some, some of those pictures behind me, this Ms. Irwin has gathered together. Some of our elementary lessons consisted of read alouds. One of the books that they read aloud is called "September 12th: We Knew Everything Would Be All Right," Fire Boat, and it focuses on discussion on heroes in our community. Some students participated in a walk to remember around their school. Some students participated in a Walk to Remember around their school and a Moment of Silence. At the secondary level, they conducted lessons in their classrooms. They read articles, they watched videos, they had activities focused around stories and remembrance. I attended and spoke at the Westlake nine-eleven ceremony on Thursday that was held at the high school auditorium. As always, it was a very moving ceremony, and our ROTC presented the colors and held the flag-folding ceremony at the closing of that event. Ms. Rivera, Mrs. Barocas, and Mr. McCarron were also in attendance at that event. They always show a film entitled, The Boat Lift Clip, and it is, every year just gets me, it's, it's very emotional. But we are off to a very good start, and with that, I am happy to announce that this year, we have two, again, two high school board reps who will be joining us every month and providing updates from the high school. This year, we have Peyton Brown. Give a little wave there, Peyton. And we have Colin Williams, who is back with us again this year. We're excited to welcome him back, and they are going to share the high school report each month with us. And I just want to say thank you, it's a big commitment. We know how busy you both are in your senior year, and we thank you for your commitment in updating us every month and all of the happenings at the high school. So, why don't you come on up to the podium and give your first report?
Good evening, Superintendent Primili, members of the Board of Education, and honored guests. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of Jackson Township High School as we begin an exciting new school year. Though only a few short weeks have passed, there's already much to share. This fall marks a significant transition for our community. With the restructuring of our district, Jackson Liberty now proudly serves as Jackson Township High School. Students and staff alike are embracing this change with enthusiasm, determined to build on the traditions of both Liberty and Memorial while creating a unified identity moving forward. Student leadership is thriving. Class officers from both schools have come together across all four grades having their first meetings. Our National Honor Society and other organizations are in the midst of their selection process with results to be announced next month. These students are already stepping into their role with energy, ready to present their peers, represent their peers, and help shape the year ahead. One of our first projects was decorating the main hall with streamers, balloons, and posters to show unity and get students excited for the year. We are also preparing for one of the most anticipated traditions of the fall, Homecoming Week. The PTSN and student counselor are soon to be at work planning the dance and related activities, ensuring it will be a memorable celebration for all. We are grateful for the partnership and support of our families, who once again demonstrate their commitment to a successful back-to-school night. The hallways will be filled with representatives from our clubs, teams, and programs, while families can enjoy meeting teachers and seeing firsthand the opportunity our school offers tomorrow at 6:30 PM. On the athletic fields, our students have wasted no time making their mark. Football earned their first win in Jackson Township history when they beat North Brunswick thirty-three to zero. That set the trend for the other fall teams who are following with their own success. The girls' volleyball team is dominating and has an undefeated record of five-oh. The field hockey team is right on their heels with a record of five-one after a five-game winning streak. The boys' soccer team opened the season strong, defeating Donovan Catholic three-zero and are standing with a record of six-and-two. The girls' soccer team, led by a determined senior class, continues to show grit and improvement with every match, starting with a record of three-and-two. The student section, now known as the Jungle, has already made their presence known. They flooded in for last week's football game, showing their school spirit by dressing in all black. The energy was palpable, and we can't wait for the next game. In the meantime, we want to wish the girls' tennis team best of luck in the Ocean County Tournament, which we'll, which they will complete in later this week.
The sports teams aren't the only ones bringing home a win. Our marching band and color guard placed first in the group, their group at the Manchester Band Competition this past weekend. They will look to continue their success with their show titled, The Dark Enchanted Forest, this Saturday at Hightstown High School. Other performing arts programs have been busy as well. The drama department just completed auditions and announced their cast at the end of last week. They are wasting no time and have already begun rehearsals for their first semester show, Beetlejuice. It's going to be incredible. Many clubs, classes, and teams have started fundraising already. The class of twenty-twenty-six held a Paint a Parking Spot fundraiser where students showed their creative side as they brought their favorite designs to life and added the most color we've ever seen to the parking lot. Additionally, our dance team recently wrapped up their annual mum fundraiser and is planning a car wash for the twentieth of this month at Station Fifty-Five. The marching band is getting ready for its always-popular twelfth annual vendor fair that seems to grow every year. But you don't have to wait to support our programs. The football team has a Dine to Donate at Pop-Up's New York Pizza going on right now, so make sure to head over after this meeting and mention JTHS Football. Finally, September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and the Jaguar basketball team is raising money for the worthy cause by placing jugs around the building where each grade level can donate. This event will run until the end of the month, and if the team reaches its $5,000 goal, Coach Connor will dye his hair pink for October. It is a tradition that has formed, and we are excited to see it continue for this year. As you can see, although it's still the first month of school, it has been very busy. There have been many successes, and we look to build upon them in the months to come. Thank you so much for your time today and supporting all of the students and staff at Jackson Township High School. We look forward to reporting here back next month with even more that we've accomplished. Until then, have a great rest of your week. Go Jags.
That was wonderful, and that's just the first week of school. So, thank you both. We look forward to hearing from you next, next month as well. And I do want to let you know also, we recognize the fact that you all are busy too. You are, obviously, we love for you to stay for the whole meeting, but if you have to leave at some point to go do studying or whatever, feel free to do that as well.
So, finally, for my superintendent's report, as we do every school year, we set a vision with our staff and we set goals. And tonight at the board meeting, I share those goals publicly with the board and the community, and we also discuss the, the board goals in a draft form tonight so that we can set those together as well. So, there are some slides if the board would like to turn around and see that presentation. I will share the district goals and our draft board goals. So, as you all know, we are now on the other side, is what we, we determined the storm, the perfect storm, and we have come out on the other side with some great strength. And what comes from that is, once we come to the other side, we have to navigate and begin to move forward together in that, that process of, you know, raising our sails and deploying and catching the wind and propelling ourselves forward into our next phase here in Jackson School District. And we're moving forward this year as one Jackson, united for excellence. That is our vision for this year and our theme. So, the district goals for twenty-five-twenty-six, before I go into them, I just want to remind everybody of the why and where we would have been had we not, not have accomplished this restructuring plan for the twenty-five-twenty-six. We had a challenge, a financial challenge, but we also had a challenge of finances, small dips in our enrollment, and the lack of availability of being to no longer be able to affect our students and our programs. We were getting into a place where programs were being reduced, athletics, co-curriculars, and it was not going to be equitable across the district for all of our students. Class sizes weren't equitable from one school to the next, and resources were being spread very thin. All of the things that we currently have in place would not be in place this year had we not done this restructuring. We still have our academies at our high school, we still have all of our athletic programs, our co-curriculars, and in fact, we've been able to add some small additional things too, and some other opportunities for our students, and some additional courses for our students too by joining two high schools and two middle schools. We also had the challenge of outdated trailers, and we needed to get students and staff out of those, those trailers. And in order to do that, it was overcrowding our elementary schools, and we needed to, to address that as well. So, the restructuring plan that we did and now are implemented really was necessary to avoid not affecting our students and our programs. We've always been united through a common mission statement and a shared vision. This we did review with our restructuring committee, and we felt that this was still a strong mission statement and our beliefs and our core beliefs. As you can see with the red highlights on our mission statement, you know, developing our students and their unique abilities, creating compelling learning experiences, a safe nurturing environment, a high-engaging, inspiring, and motivating lessons and curriculum, creating critical thinkers, and a commitment to scholarship, character, and initiative, and lifelong knowledge is still at the core of our mission statement, as are our district values and beliefs. We are united through these, these beliefs and these values, and they will continue to be our focus in our classrooms on a daily basis. So, with the district being united for excellence and restructured, you can imagine Goal One, working on this year to ensure we have a strong climate, a united culture, and a sense of belonging in our schools. Some of the objectives there that you see will be supporting a smooth transition for our students, our staff, and our families to our new school structures. We'll continue to share our values and expectations of respect, responsibility, and resilience, creating a unified school and developing a sense of belonging that every student feels that they belong and that every student will succeed, and creating that shared vision of how we will memorialize the past and represent the old and move forward with the new. And one of those things we'll be doing is our crest and revisiting our crest. That needs to be revised and updated, and we want to do that in a meaningful way that also honors the past. And as you can hear, we've, we've already done it through our fall sports. We want to unify our co-curriculars and our athletics and paying attention to that, that we are building a united community within our school structure. Also, in, in Goal One, we will be checking on that climate and culture by administering a survey to our students, our staff, and our parents. Sometime in October, we'll be using that to set goals and to guide the work that we need to do to build our strong community and culture and a sense of belonging, and then we will assess that again by re-administering that survey in the, the late spring. Obviously, we want to build positive relationships among students and among staff and students to staff, and we want to always expand our positive approaches to reduce bullying and to educate and use remedial measures and restorative practices to educate our students on their behaviors and their choices. Goal Two for this year is the academics, creating and reminding our students of our high expectations and strong supports, clear academic and behavioral standards for all of our students, to hold that bar high for everybody, but have accountability with empathy. We want students to take ownership of their learning through identifying strengths and areas of improvement and setting goals. We're working on that now. Building students' resilience and working through difficult problems with support and guidance, that's how they learn, restorative and responsive practices, and we'll continue to strengthen and use our multi-tiered system of supports for academics, behavior, and mental health. We'll use data to drive instruction, interventions, and enrichment within our academic programs, and using that data to support our students through opportunities at Common Lunch, Win, and Support Classes. And we'll scaffold our language and ensure that we are reaching every student in our classrooms and our families at home as well. Goal Three is still building on that academic excellence through growth and rigor. As mentioned in our, in our mission statement, we want to present students with complex, cognitively complex tasks, create lessons of higher-order thinking, open-ended problem-solving, application-based learning. We can get students to higher levels by scaffolding. We'll focus on scaffolding within our classrooms. And we'll create opportunities through enrichment and advanced work, using our data to drive our instruction, using PLC time, professional learning communities with our staff. We've already set up those, those sessions and those availabilities for teachers to hold meetings together on a regular basis to discuss and review data and instructional practices that will meet the needs of the students in front of them. Also, building on academic excellence will be a revision to resources for our literacy programs in the high school. It's been well overdue, and that will be implemented this year. We're looking at an implementation probably second semester. We'll expand our formative assessment and ensure that district assessments are done with fidelity and that the data is reviewed and discussed and used to drive instruction. And we'll continue, as I said earlier, to strengthen our tiered system of support. Safety and health for Goal Four is an area we always focus, focus in on every single year. We continue to assess the safety, we continue to train around safety, and we continue to drill around safety, and that will continue again this year, strengthening all of those areas, including our threat assessment protocol. Goal Five, under Finance, Facilities, and Transportation, continue to advocate for equitable state funding, continue to research grants and revenue sources, look at a debt service referendum to focus on large priority facility needs. We'll complete the restructuring of our restructuring plan for September twenty-twenty-five, and we will plan and implement new bus routes, which we have done, thank you, around transportation and continue to expand and troubleshoot those areas. And finally, District Goal Six, our homeschool connection and human, human resources offices. We will transition to a new website. We have been needing to do this. We needed to do this last year, but as you can imagine, through the restructuring process, it was very difficult to have to take that on. There just was not enough manpower to be able to do that with everything else that was going on. So, you see that we're kind of living in this limbo area right now in our website, but we are working on it and looking to roll out that new website and transition to the new one in the fall. We're looking probably late October for that to be happening. And we'll, as always, focus on community engagement in our district, and we will highlight and celebrate district and school events and achievements that our staff and community has made, and always looking to find strong ways to recruit talented staff members here to this district. So, in our goals and our vision for the district, we always spend our summer and our work with our administrative teams, and then our administrative teams work with our staff to align all of our goals from the district level to the school level, to the grade level, and to the teacher level, and then finally to the student level, and students setting goals for themselves. So, those are our areas of focus and our vision for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year. So, moving on for the draft of our board goals, I ask for a little bit of input, and then I put together some suggestions for the board here, so this is for you to review. We try to set about four goals with the board, for the board to keep an eye on throughout the school year. And for this year, we're focused in on, obviously, fiscal. The board will advocate, identify, and implement revenue-generating and cost-saving endeavors for the district, focused primarily in the areas of working with the administration to develop a budget that is balanced and supports and enriching and complete academic experience for all of our students. The board will work with the district administration to create a plan for a referendum that supports the restructured district and that will provide upgrades to our facilities that are very much needed while not costing the tax barrier or any additional money. And the board will continue to support the administration in seeking out grants and other alternative fund-raising sources or funding sources. Draft Goal Two for the board is around the area of curriculum and extracurricular. The board will receive monthly updates at these meetings, so the public will receive them too, as to the status of the schools in regards to our unified and restructured district. The administration will review data from the fall of twenty-twenty-five climate survey that I just referenced earlier. You will see, you'll review that data, and you will see the goals that we have set, and then you will see the spring data as well. And the board will also review the annual state of the schools and school performance report as presented to the board at a board meeting. In the area of communication, we can always strengthen communication, utilizing the committee structure that has been put in place at this board, and you hear those, and you're going to hear them in a few minutes as well, provide reports of the board's subcommittee work that is being done, that will report out to the board and to the public. Continue to utilize the district chain of command and communication method when responding to community concerns about district operations and student needs, and continue to educate lawmakers on the financial situations that have been caused from S2 and advocate for the change, and continue to review educational legislation being proposed and share that information with the community. And then, Goal Four focuses around making sure that we're monitoring goals with a mid-year review here at a board meeting and an end-of- review here at a board meeting and an end-of-year review at the board meeting. So that focuses around four board goals, so I do want to open the floor for any questions, obviously, any input that the board wants to provide for the board goals, and then any questions you might have on the district goals. Yep, Ms. Osmond?
Okay, so regarding the board goals, I was glad to see in the district goals, obviously, Goals Two and Three are all about like rigor, challenging students, making sure they're prepared, and I'd like to see the board, and I'll preference this with, I come from a higher ed lens, and I have older children in higher ed, so I see a lot of the gaps every day between K-12 and higher ed. And I'd like the board to really look at closely, have a discussion and explore some of our procedures around final exams and how we currently do that and how we could change that to prepare students a bit better with study skills and learning how to take much larger exams, which there, you know, any student who's moving on to more education is going to be faced with, and learning that, how to study for that younger is really, really important. You know, it's something that I see every day. So I just kind of want to put that out there, that that's definitely a procedure that I think as a board we need to explore and make a goal to make this better, because this is something that costs no money, and, you know, we could make a difference very easily without it being a burden on our district.
Okay, so what I will do, if the board agrees, I can add that to the curricular and extracurricular board goals to review, have the administration review the policy for exams. Okay? Okay. Yep, any other questions, suggestions? Okay, well, thank you very much, and that concludes my superintendent's report.
Got it. Thank you, Ms. Permili. I'd like to now turn the meeting over to Ms. Blood, our new state monitor, for her report.
Given this is my first meeting, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank everyone in Central Office. For the warm welcome, particularly Ms. Permili and Mr. Boginski for providing everything about which I inquired or for which I requested. They have been outstanding in making me feel welcome and providing that material. My early appraisal of the district, and I have not been here very long, but it's very apparent that the district has done everything within its power to ensure a thorough and efficient education for its students and has gone to great lengths to ensure fiscal responsibility and to meet its fiscal obligations. And during my time here, I will continue to work with the superintendent and the business administrator, as well as the board, to ensure that that continues. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
I'm going to do standing committee reports, starting with Buildings and Grounds. Chairperson, Mr. McCarron.
Some capital improvements district-wide. Jackson Township High School parking lot lights near the stadium, electricians located and corrected on the ground short. The repairs were completed. Student parking lot asphalt repairs were completed. Jackson Township 5-6, Room 404, the HVAC repairs to compressor, replace contactor. Room 409 HVAC repairs, TXV valve replaced. Maintenance installing 20 new atomic classroom clocks throughout the building. Switlick HVAC repairs, replace TXV valve in the unit. Johnson, the flagpole was repaired by maintenance. Crawford fire system installed, the new Crawford walk-in sinkhole repaired near the parking lot. Jackson Township Middle School tennis wall grant has been completed, and district-wide all lift stations serviced by the plumber.
I had a question, Mr. McCarron. Do you have any update on the cleanup from the 5-6 trailer removal? Did the committee talk about that?
Sure, yeah, so the last of the trailers was actually pulled off the property last week, so there is still some slight remediation that has to occur, and then we have the township out for a final inspection, and after that occurs, then we have a landscaping company come in, clear any excess concrete, and cede the remaining area, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Station, chairperson, Ms. Barokas. No report? Oh, I only say if there's a report. Okay, no problem. So that was the only committee with a report. Any ad hoc committees? Anything? Tyra, did you want to say anything about the meeting coming up?
There's only a county meeting September 25th at 6:00 at the Clarin Hotel in Tom's River.
All right. I need a motion for approval of policy. First reading revised.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, you want to just mention the amendment?
Yes, I had it in my comments. I'm so sorry. We'd like to make a motion to amend Policy 5770. I didn't write what we were saying.
Yeah, sure.
The motion would be to amend that policy to delete the words "request the search of," which I believe is in the second paragraph bold. Is it the second paragraph?
I'll pull it up.
Oh, it's first?
I could pull it up.
Second.
Second.
Second paragraph. So to delete the words "request the search of." So somebody needs to move it second, and we'll vote on the policy as amended.
Okay. Can I? There's one more word, "or request the search of." You need "or" taken out.
So the motion is to delete the words "or request the search of."
You want me to read the whole thing, because I have it in here?
Sure.
Okay. So we're going to delete...
Yeah, "or request the search of" from that paragraph.
From the second paragraph, starting after the comma?
Yeah.
Just delete the words "or request the search of"
Okay.
"from that bold text in the second paragraph."
Thank you.
Yep.
So I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Do I do a discussion again? Discussion?
If you can do it all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're voting on the policy as amended.
Okay, so I need a motion for the approval of the policy as amended?
As well as the other policy.
As well as the policy number P-110, the organizational chart, which is the second reading?
Motion.
Discussion?
Second.
Sorry.
Mike, second.
All right, discussion? And roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
The closed session meeting, August 2025, and the official board meeting, August 2025 business meeting, and the official board meeting, August 27, 2025, business meeting, personnel only.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
So like, when I, when I read this... When I read this, do I read all, I can hear a motion, I can hear a motion, and then I read the... Got it. Okay, I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
I need a motion for approval of the Treasurers and Board Secretaries' report.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
I need a motion to open public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard. I have a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to move Finance.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, so Finance...
One through 12. I have items, so can I, is this, can I start the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Seconded by, I think, Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
I had a question on items Finance, number nine, and 10. So number nine is the wrestling mat surplus. I wanted to know if we were losing any money on shipping of the mats or how that deal was working?
Nope, the buyer from Illinois coming to pick it up.
Wonderful.
Yep.
And on the IT surplus, I just had a question, you know, I want to be sure we're getting full value back on items that we've paid as taxpayers and the district's paid. So how are we certain that we're going to be getting max value on those items that we've declared not useful?
So tonight, you're approving that they have no more value to the school district. So, but what we would do after tonight, we would contact a company that we've used in the past that would come and take the surplus IT equipment. They take it, they assess it to determine if there's any value for them on, from a resale basis or from a value for parts, and if there is a value for resale, we get a percentage of that on resale or a percentage of if they have value of them for parts.
So at one time, we did this on salvage vehicles, and we had some other people come in and determine, you know, what the value was. Is it worth having another company additionally come in and see if there's value?
It's pretty labor-intensive, and the alternative to not doing this would be to pay to have them recycled, because they're required to have them, they're not just something you could throw away in the garbage.
I, Ms. President, Madam President, is out, and I told her I would let the public know about the outstanding lunch balance. So currently, the district's outstanding lunch balance is $121,685.38. It is down about $13,000 from July to August, so thank you for anyone who paid the balance or donated to do that. I also wanted to say that the board is pleased to report that the Department of Education has agreed to reimburse the district for the prior state monitor's salary, which we requested last month. So those were two things we wanted to let the public know. Any other discussion items?
Number 11, the RFP. How long will that take? What's that timeframe for that, for the bond?
So tonight, you'd be approving us to go out to RFP, so we would put together a request for proposals and send that out, and then allow a certain time period for that to come back. At this point, I would say you'd be looking at probably the November ward meeting for potential, potentially hiring somebody.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
I need a motion to move facilities, items one through three.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Number two, this person we're hiring is a bookkeeper. I'm guessing already is in our staff?
Yes, so the ones that have no value, no cost to them, those are our staff members or our student, you know, our programs using the facilities.
So I'm guessing they're in our bookkeeping department or...
So say that again?
Are they in our bookkeeping department or financial department?
Who puts this together for facilities?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Maria Roberts, who works as our facility scheduler. She works in our business office.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
Anyone else? Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
I need a motion to move programs, items one through nine.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
I need a motion to move students, items one through six.
Motion.
Second.
Wait, one through five, you mean?
No, we asked...
Oh, that's right. Discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
I need a motion to move personnel, items one through 39.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? I just wanted to point out the numerous volunteers on item number 12 and 13. There's two alphabet, three alphabet worth coming of staff that are volunteering for clubs and activities through Elms, JTHS, and JTEMSS, and I just wanted to thank those staff members for doing that. Any other discussions? Roll call.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Barokas?
Yes.
Mrs. Gardella?
Abstain 21P, yes, everything else. I need a motion to open the public forum on any topic. This public forum will be for questions on any topic.
Motion.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name, whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard. Seeing no one come, should I wait longer? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to open board comments, starting with Mr. Walsh.
As we're going through this, there's some really interesting programs that we're continuing or starting. The fifth grade, the Den House system, I think, is very, very good for that age student to communicate, learn, communicate, and socialize, because they need that, okay? Also, the CPR training and the, with the AED program is very important. The mental health support that we're applying for, okay, considering that the federal government's cutting everything that they could possibly cut out of us, okay, it looks like the state's trying to throw us a little life preserver there. Very good. And esports, even though I'm a football guy, a baseball guy, esports, but my kids like it, so that's it.
Just wanted to wish everybody a welcome back to school. Hope it's a great school year for everybody. Was able to attend the Westlake 9/11 memorial event, remembrance event here. It was a nice event that was held, and learned during that event that we also assisted Westlake with our facility over the summer to do another fundraising event, which ended up leading them to raise enough money to outfit a kitchen for a homeless veteran, which I thought was really incredible. I think it's great, Ms. Permili, that you were able to open the door for them and assist them with that. You're so much more than just a superintendent, and I appreciate it. Yeah, Mr. Boginski, thank you.
Just wanted to welcome everybody back to another school year. I wish you all a fun and healthy and safe school year. So far, things that I am seeing on different town pages and people who I'm talking with, it's going pretty well, so keep being positive at home and setting the tone for your kids.
I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and visiting us on live stream, the presentations, inputs, and discussions. I hope everyone has a successful and enriching school year. Thank you to Ms. Permili.
school year. Thank you to Ms. Permili and her staff for all your hard work and dedication to the district, and everyone have a safe and fabulous evening.
Hi, everyone. It's been a great start to the new year. You could feel the energy. I'm just super excited for all of our teams and all of our arts and our bands are coming out. I mean, it's just, just like I said, you could feel the energy everywhere you go, our staff. I really think everyone's coming together. You know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but I think it's slowly really coming along well. It was really nice attending the 9/11 program through Westlake at the high school. If you haven't seen the movie Boat Lift, look it up. It's just really moving, and every year we watch it, unfortunately, and it just speaks, you know, tells really what, a lot of stuff that went on that day that a lot of people don't realize. Also, this Friday, we have Alumni Night, Friday Night Lights, so I'm looking forward to the game. Kickoff is at 6:30. The first 100 alumni who attend will receive a rally towel via, from Susan Stafford Smith and Diane Noda Francesco. I'll be marching around in my new Jag jacket, so come say hello if you get a chance. Also, I'm looking forward to attending on Friday at Elms. We have a blue ribbon cutting for their grand, for the new, for the Environmental Learning Center in Garden, so I'm really looking forward to that. It looks like it's going to be a beautiful day, and, you know, it should be nice for everyone. So anyway, have a good night and thanks for joining us.
Is my mic on now?
Yeah.
Okay. I wanted to thank the Westlake Veterans Club for also doing the $900 donation to the choir program. I read that, and I thought that was awesome to be able to support our students. I wanted to just remind my board, I know a lot of us are active, and then anybody in the community, you know, elections are upon us, and as you meet with state and local candidates, you know, be sure you're asking about how they're going to help us address public school funding. I also wanted to be sure to say that, you know, we really appreciate everybody in the community coming together to support our schools through fundraising activities, and we just, I wanted to say, just be sure you're donating directly to a sports booster club, PTN, or the Jeff, or the Jackson School District, and not just an individual, just to ensure that students are benefiting from your donation. All the affiliated clubs and boosters and parent networks, et cetera, they submit a fundraising action plan, and they follow our board policy 9191. I also just wanted to acknowledge that the school year started off well, and, you know, thank you to everybody involved in that, and thank you to those parents and community members who gave grace to all of us for achieving one week, or actually, we're probably at 10 days now of a school year. So thank you for that. And with that...
One, one second, just before we close. Okay, the food pantry at Getz, is that open? Oh, it's here. No, it's not at Getz. All right. It's going to be at the middle school here at this building.
It's at the middle school, and it's operational after hours, after school hours.
After hours.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and nobody comes into the building. It's a drive-through and pickup.
Okay, very good. But it's collecting already?
They didn't have the first question, they didn't have their first distribution yet.
Yes, you may.
They didn't have their first distribution yet. It's coming up in the beginning of October. They have two, two months, two days a month, a 5:30 PM distribution, and then a one Saturday distribution.
Very good.
I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
By acclamation, aye.
Aye.